Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting Tuesday, November the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P. M. Board Meeting Room Thirty-nine Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McClusser, would you call and roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Eames, present. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, ma'am. I'm present from somewhere in the Atlantic Ocean.
Thank you. Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Dalton?
Here. Moving to item three. Would you all join me in a moment of silence? And then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving to item five. Items to be added to the agenda. Are there any items to be added?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add to the consent agenda and move item twelve A from new business to the consent agenda, as it was already discussed and printed, talked about in the work session. And then we would like to add, under matters from work session, the hiring of assistant director and fulfilling, and filling that position at the landfill. And we'd also like to add motion by Mr. Tucker to proceed with the facility improvement that was discussed at the work session.
Would that be thirteen B, thirteen A and thirteen B?
Thirteen A and thirteen B.
Okay.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren, Mr. Tucker, thank you for the second. Any discussion on the motion? Tucker hit it, okay.
I'm good.
If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote verbally?
Yes, ma'am, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Are we good, Mr.?
We're good, yes.
Thank you. Moving to item seven, our consent. No, I'm sorry, back up, item six. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm making a motion to approve the agenda as presented, sir, with the changes.
With the changes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. You got a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Eames, any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes, ma'am, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving to item seven, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tucker, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Warren, any discussion?
Um, I got a question on that, real quick, if you don't mind, before we... Um, adoption, the resolution. We're gonna still do this resolutions for the first responders, correct, tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to be certain. I know we're voting on it, but I just want to be certain we's doing it up front. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions, comments? Not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I vote yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Moving to item eight, our presentations. We will now move to the front, gentlemen, ladies?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and glad to see all of the citizens out tonight. We have a couple of presentations here that I want to first start with Ms. Terry. And she is, she has her family with her, so where is Ms. Terry? Bless your heart. Are you gonna be able to bring her down front? To be recognized? And also, um, family? You guys need a chair?
I'll get it.
She's got a wheelchair. Oh, bless her heart. In fact, I want everyone to know that this is a Centurion, and I would sign a contract to make it that far and be able to walk like that. But I, um, I met her, Ms. Terry, over at Oak Grove Baptist Church. I was running a little late and I went to their hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. And once I arrived, I was just trying to sit there and kinda get a little food, a little nourishment in me. And there was one table open and it was beside this young lady right here. And I had no idea she was a hundred years old, so we started conversing. Her family brought me up to speed. But just a little bit about Ms. Terry, she actually retired at the age of seventy-five. She actually worked for Roman Eagle. And, you know, she spent her life taking care of other people. Also, she has been a member of Oak Grove Baptist Church for probably eighty-six years. And that is amazing. And I, I just said, wow, I have to maybe bring you out and, and we need to celebrate you and salute you. But this is certificate of recognition. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere congratulations to Ms. Ophelia Griffin Terry. She celebrated her hundredth birthday on November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Is with great pleasure to send you best wishes and warmest congratulations on this amazing milestone. And we hope that your day was filled with everlasting joy and ple- pleasure. Happy one-hundredth birthday, Ms. Ophelia Griffin Terry. Given under my hand, Robert M. Tucker, Jr., Bannister District Supervisor, Darrell Dalton, Chairman. Thank you all for your patience. There is another resolution that I have to take care of because of the heroic actions of our EMS fire departments, our state troopers, sheriff's department, nine-one-one dispatchers, and all of those, the Red Cross and everyone. I represent, obviously, the Bannister District. And there was a fire over at North Point Apartments. But, you know, we certainly appreciate the fact that our first responders were there on the ready. And by the grace of God, we did not lose any life. We lost property, but that can be replaced. So this time, I'm gonna ask all first responders, EMS, if you're here, come on down with me tonight because we wanna love on you a little bit and we wanna celebrate and salute you as well. Saw the sheriff here earlier, I don't know where... Sheriff, come on down here with me, brother. Are there any deputies, nine-one-one dispatchers? We wanna honor all of these people for all of their hard work and effort, not only just on the North Point fire, but, you know, on any given day, at any given moment, twenty-four-seven, they respond to the call of duty. So, tonight honoring North Point Lane Fire First Responders. Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, November twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three, Business Meeting. The following resolution is being presented and adopted for this group. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency, medical services. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of our first responders is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas in the early morning hours of November twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, fire crews were dispatched to North Point Apartments, located at six hundred North Point Lane in Pennsylvania County, Virginia. And whereas the massive blaze triggered what's known as a, excuse me, as a countywide call for assistance. The fire crews from the city of Danville, Virginia also responded. And whereas, when first responders arrived on the scene, heavy flames had already engulfed half of the apartment building with residents trapped inside and many trying to escape the blaze through balconies and windows. And whereas the Blairs Fire and Rescue Department, in collaboration with neighboring fire departments, promptly and efficiently responded to the fire, demonstrating professionalism, courage, and exemplary teamwork in rescuing the residents and containing and exhausting the blaze. And whereas the swift action and heavy bravery displayed by county volunteer firefighters in containing and extinguishing the fire undoubtedly prevented further damage and ensured the safety of residents and surrounding community. And whereas volunteers and first responders throughout the county in Danville gave their time to help ensure that evacuees were rescued, sheltered, clothed, fed, and emotionally comfort through this traumatic event. And whereas people throughout the county in Danville responded with outpouring of support for the victims of this incident. And whereas the county recognizes the efforts and sacrifices of the first responders who risked their own safety to respond to this apartment fire. And now there be it resolved that the board hereby recognizes and honors the bravery, the heroism of the Blairs Fire and Rescue Department and all participating fire departments, E-nine-one-one operators, public safety staff, local law enforcement, volunteers, and anyone else involved in assisting in the recent large apartment fire. And encourages the citizens of the county to join in in expressing our heartfelt thanks to these brave men and women for their exemplary service and sacrifice. Given under my hand this twenty-eighth day of November, two thousand twenty-three, Robert M. Tucker, Jr., Bannister Board of Supervisors, Pennsylvania County, Darrell Dalton, Chairman, Stuart J. Terrell, Jr., County Administrator. Let's celebrate them.
I just wanna make a comment. This has been eight years for me, but I've worked pretty closely with Mr. Fowler throughout his tenure. He's chief out at Blairs and they're certainly one of our elite folks. We are elite organization. We have quite a few of those in the county and we appreciate each and every one of them. Mr. Fowler, I understand you were, took charge of this and was first on the scene. And it certainly worked out as well as it could based on the circumstances. But Mr. Fowler also serves on the Danville Fire Department. So that made it a smooth operation. And I, I don't wanna single just him out because everybody did a great job. But he runs a great organization out at Blairs. And I just wanna tell him that the eight years that I've served, I've enjoyed serving with you and you've done a great job and I appreciate you.
Got another presentation. Also, Wayside Park. I'm not sure if many of you are familiar with Wayside, but it's in northern portion of the county, it's been revived and it looks great. Some of you have been there, some have not. But just here recently, and I'm gonna ask David, if he will, to come up, David Billings. He's from Dominion Power. And this presentation is just for his group of guys. They saw that they could do an addition and wanted to pitch in and help with our park as far as beautifying it, just giving it better luster. So your guys built four benches, is that correct? And they are just, they're, they did an excellent job. And it's something that they volunteered to do. And I am very, very thankful for folks that are willing to come out and help. And a bunch of his guys from Dominion Power in Alta Vista pitched in. I know a lot of these guys. I know guys from years ago that worked there. And very, very hardworking people in the field during storms, during regular day. But they pitched in to beautify something that we had already made look nice. They just added an extra attraction to it. So this is a certificate of appreciation. Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere appreciation to David Billings and the Dominion Energy Alta Vista Office for choosing Parks and Rec as the recipient of their local volunteer project. The four benches installed along the walking trails in the park, which three are located near the creek, will allow visitors to take a break and enjoy the water while they take in all the beautiful park has to offer. Just wanna say thank you for your generous contribution to Wayside Park and how it's gonna benefit our park and the beauty of it. And the visitors there will enjoy it years to come. And it come at a perfect time. Justin will tell you, he's our director of Parks and Rec. We just had a fishing event and Darrell Dalton was at it too. We had a youth fishing day on November the eleventh. And some kids there, boys and girls, came. And they caught, some, some kids had never fished before, caught some of the first fish. And they got to enjoy these benches and these, this additive to the park. So let's give them a hand this evening, okay?
Bob said he's got something he wants to say. He really don't need a mic, but anyway.
I really don't. I just think it's important for our citizens to know not only about the middle school parks, but Wayside Park also. We were able, with the help of Mr. Blackstock before, Mr. Dudley, and then Mr. Dudley, to be able to go out and secure about seventy percent of the funds for that project that didn't cost the taxpayers of Pennsylvania County. I mean, we saved seventy percent and it was over a half a million dollar project. So that was... So that was significant tax savings and this just shows, you know, when you do stuff like that, there's folks like this in the private sector that want to continue the project and continue supporting things like that. And it happened at the middle school and I just think it's all of those projects. I think it's important that everybody knows that it's always not county dollars that's doing it. And a lot of that, you know, of course, we, we got Jason, we, Justin, I mean, we got Justin who is doing it now, but at that time Mark Moore was doing a lot and got a lot of those supplies. So, you know, keep in mind when you're hearing these projects that, you know, your board of supervisors and your staff are out working with the private sector trying to get some of that funding and certainly this is part of how you do that. So all I'm gonna say is we'd really like for Dominion to consider to writing us a nice
Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county and/or the resident, registered agent of such resident or landowner.
check too.
Each person shall step up, give his or her name, district, and all the tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during a hearing of the citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that signs up to speak during the said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priorities at the next board meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. McLaughlin, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, sir. Jim Scares.
Welcome, Mr. Scares.
Good evening. My name is Jim Scares and I live in the Westover District. Tonight I would like to talk about a Facebook Live post that I watched the week before the election. It featured one of the members of this board and in this post he stated that last year he had authorized the Lynchburg Commonwealth Attorney to do an investigation of himself in order to prove his innocence and clear his good name concerning accusations of this wrong, of his wrongdoing and unethical, unethical behavior. The board member stated upon completing the investigation, the Lynchburg Commonwealth Attorney found no wrongdoing on his part. I was intrigued by this because I had not heard of this investigation and to my knowledge neither had any of the other members of this board. After a four-year request was sent to the Lynchburg CA for any information on this matter, I was supplied with a copy of the investigation's final report along with the five-page letter authorizing the investigation. After reading the report and the five-page later, letter, I was shocked to learn that this investigation had nothing to do with clearing the good name of the board member, but instead it was investigating four county employees. The five-page letter authorizing the investigation, which was signed by the board member, listed the names of the employees he wanted investigated and their supposed misdeeds. The final report did nothing, the final report did find nothing wrong had been done, but instead of clearing the board member's good name, the Commonwealth Attorney's report cleared the four county employees of any wrongdoing. I guess that's why the board member buried the report and didn't inform the rest of the board of its existence. It appears the only crime these four county employees committed was to do something to invoke the wrath of this tyrant, which triggered the vengeful attack. Why this board member would choose to lie about this investigation is beyond me, but it doesn't surprise me. Maybe he was playing the victim card to try and garner sympathy votes and it may have worked because he did squeak out a win by a meager thirty-two votes. I, on the other hand, believe it was his true nature showing through once again. Before last month's board meeting, I accused this board member of being a liar and his response to me was, prove it. Well, tonight I have copies of the report, the five-page letter authorizing the investigation, and a copy of the Facebook Live post is proof of this lie. If the fake news Star Tribune or the Danville Register are interested in committing an accidental act of true journalism, I will supply them with copies as well, but I'm not holding my breath on that issue. This past election, only fifty percent, this past election, only fifty percent of registered voters bothered to show up to vote. I would strongly urge every citizen of this county to wake up and get involved, start attending these meetings, and hold your elected officials accountable before it's too late. If you don't, you may wake up and in the near future find out you have lost your county and your elected officials care nothing about your wishes and are only focused on the wishes of their special interest groups. Thank you.
Three minutes is complete. Chuck Angier.
Welcome, Mr. Angier.
Welcome, Chuck. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity, thank you for your service and staff also. It's a tough job y'all got, you gotta give everybody everything they want without spending any money.
Yeah.
I hesitate to bring this up, but this summer I heard rumblings about a first responder, a highly respected first responder, that had been banned from SOVA hospital properties. That's big news, really big news, but it wasn't in the news. It wasn't in the newspaper, it wasn't on the television, it wasn't on Facebook, it wasn't anywhere. So, well, surely if I four-year the emails of all the boards, the board of supervisors, I might find where the source of that information came from. And it came from an email from a member of this board to other members of this board stating that this first responder had clearly been banned from SOVA property indefinitely. Now, it's obviously not true and even Mr. Terrell over here denied that it ever happened. So I hope that the people watching tonight and the citizens will come forward and ask the supervisor to explain his position, why he did such a thing, and why, what kind of good it could possibly do for the county. That's all I have to say. Thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Angier.
Anyone else signed up, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, sir. Fred Curl?
Welcome, sir.
I'm Fred Curl, I got two registered letters saying they were trying to get a new jail out here on twenty-nine. I got a residence right beside of it, got a bunch of little kids living there. I used to live beside a jail back in the sixties. I just bought a brand-new car and my wife went out to get groceries. She'd come back and said, go out and get those groceries out of that car. I went out there, I said, where'd you park the car? It's not out there. Well, it happened that this guy got out of jail, come up and stole my car and carried it to South Carolina and wrecked it. But I didn't mind the groceries, but I did miss that car. And, you know, over where they built Green Rock, they did some good planning over there. They put it back in behind a million dollars worth of dirt and you can't see who, see the jail. But now we want to put a jail out here on twenty-nine, right beside my residence and I don't really care for that, but, in my opinion, if they'd, back in the sixties, we had to build a jail down in Greensboro and we built it across the street. If I was planning, I'd put by the old theater and put a high-rise jail over there and they'd probably save, the new jail would probably last fifty years and you figure the man-hours and the cost of taking prisoners back and forth, it might add up. So, and in the letter it says adjacent or across the street, but it is right beside my property. I wanted to let you know that. And they wanted my views on it and my views was, it's just been a lot of piss-pot planning and I wanted to let you know that. So you can, I thank you for letting me talk on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Curl.
Anyone else signed up, Ms. McLaughlin?
Michael Kendrick.
Michael Kendrick. Welcome, sir.
Get in and thank you for this opportunity to let me come forward and talk. I just want to do a little reflection of this past, since May of this year. You know, me and my wife never really got involved with government, got involved with elections other than going to vote, but that all changed this past May. We went to what was supposed to have been at that time, the last meeting on the accident project at Faith Memorial Church. And our life changed drastically after that meeting. And the purpose I want to do, I want to, I'd like to encourage citizens, like Jim said, you know, get involved with your government, you know? Sometimes you don't think you're effective, you know? But if good people don't let their opinions be known, if they don't come forward, if they don't support the government, then who's gonna come forward? We see this school boards all across the country, our government, we look at our government in Washington, we've got to come forward, let our voices be heard. So that, that's one reason, you know, over the holidays, my wife loves these Hallmark-type Christmas movies, you know? The man-woman, they hate each other at the start of the movie and at the end of each other, love each other. And we watched about four of them, okay? I'm a Western man myself, but we watched about four of these and I looked at it and I said, does any of this sound familiar? The main theme of every one of those four movies was a big development coming into a small community and changing that community forever. And a small group of citizens get together, they band together, they come together, they fight it, and at the end of the movie, against all kinds of odds, they win. Of course, ours wasn't a Hallmark movie, our outcome was not a Hallmark movie, but we did come together. We came together as a community, I got to, I got to meet a great bunch of people in our community, people I would, neighbors I would never knew, never knew we had such fine people. So it is possible to come together and work against them. The second time, my time's getting limited, but we had an election, okay? And I'd like to, I'd like to point out, there's several things I look for in a-
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. I look for character, virtue, honesty, integrity, high standards, principle, and values when I look for somebody to support. I'm proud to say I found that in Josh Austin. Never knew the fellow, he bought my aunt's house, not even a mile down the road, didn't know him before this election. Ms. Ang, I found you to be a, every one of these things apply to you. So proud to have got to know you. Mr. Scares, the same applies for you.
Three minutes is complete.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Vanessa Scares.
Welcome, Ms. Scares.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Scares and I live in the Westover District. I for one am looking forward to a new year and the hope that turning over a new leaf will happen on the Board of Supervisors. For me, that would mean no longer receiving seven AM text messages from a member of this board or text messages following the meetings like I did last month. It would mean no more emails asking me for a meeting between him and my husband. It would mean my husband and I would be called Jim and Vanessa instead of Thumper and Bible-thumping hypocrite. I sincerely hope that it means that every member of this board plans to follow Matthew eighteen fifteen, which says, if your brother does something wrong to you, go to him, talk to him, and tell him what he has done. But it's my guess that since this has not happened yet and the brother did not get reelected, that this relationship now becomes unimportant. New board members will find out that if you think for yourself and vote against a certain board member, he will shun you unless he wants to contact you to talk you into getting rid of someone that he does not like instead of trying to work with that person. I suggest that new board members vote the other way at their first opportunity to save themselves from the circus. Everyone keeps talking about the circus. Even his niece posted on Facebook that if he gets reelected, the circus will continue. I share all of this truth to let the citizens and the board members know what I have been dealing with. I have held my tongue long enough. I didn't want to be accused of trying to interrupt someone's reelection possibilities. And now honestly, I stand here wishing that I had shared my story earlier. I think I could have persuaded at least thirty-three people. But I went to this board member, I stood right over here, some of you witnessed it, it's about eight months ago, and I suggested that he contact my family members individually about their problems, saying that they were between him and them, not me. It didn't work, so now I'm stating it publicly. I also want to point out that this board member contacted a past employee at my husband's employer and asked him to get in touch with someone that works there and get the names of Jim's supervisor and next-level supervisor. Why he needs that information, I'm not sure, but if he supplied a viable reason to my husband, he would probably get an answer. I will continue to say it, the manipulation is sickening. Families go through a lot, Josh Austin can detest that. Families go through a lot because the law of sowing and reaping is alive and well in this land, whether you believe it or not. You could take off some stress off of your family if you simply learn to behave yourself. Do what your mom told you to do, adore your grandma. Look at your own actions before someone else's, like Matthew seven-five says, you hypocrite. Take the plank out of your own eye and then you can clearly see to remove the speck from your brother's eye. The circus will end when the manipulation, the lies, and the attempts at intimidation end. When people stop asking for forgiveness but continue the same behavior expecting different results. My Bible teaches-
Ms. Scares, you need to wind it down.
Two seconds, yeah.
Wind it down.
My Bible teaches that repentance follows forgiveness, but many denominations only teach salvation and I consider that to be fire insurance religion. People need to repent, change their ways, but until then, I plan to keep coming up here and pointing out the truth. And also I pray, Father, forgive them for they know not what they do. Amen.
Jane Kendrick.
Welcome, Ms. Kendrick.
Hi, Mr. Dalton, thank you. Jane Kendrick, Tunstall District. I have a couple of things really quickly to say.
Pull your mic down, Ms. Kendrick.
Sorry.
Okay, there you go.
I would just like to point out something that's been on my mind for weeks now and still have not received any- But it's my guess that since this has not happened yet and the brother did not get reelected, that this relationship now becomes unimportant. New board members will find out that if you think for yourself and vote against a certain board member, he will shun you unless he wants to contact you to talk you into getting rid of someone that he does not like instead of trying to work with that person. I suggest that new board members vote the other way at their first opportunity to save themselves from the circus. Everyone keeps talking about the circus. Even his niece posted on Facebook that if he gets reelected, the circus will continue. I share all of this truth to let the citizens and the board members know what I have been dealing with. I have held my tongue long enough. I didn't want to be accused of trying to interrupt someone's reelection possibilities. And now honestly, I stand here wishing that I had shared my story earlier. I think I could have persuaded at least thirty-three people. But I went to this board member, I stood right over here, some of you witnessed it, it's about eight months ago, and I suggested that he contact my family members individually about their problems, saying that they were between him and them, not me. It didn't work, so now I'm stating it publicly. I also want to point out that this board member contacted a past employee at my husband's employer and asked him to get in touch with someone that works there and get the names of Jim's supervisor and next-level supervisor. Why he needs that information, I'm not sure. But if he supplied a viable reason to my husband, he would probably get an answer. I will continue to say it, the manipulation is sickening. Families go through a lot. Josh Austin can detest that. Families go through a lot because the law of sowing and reaping is alive and well in this land, whether you believe it or not. You could take off some stress off of your family if you simply learn to behave yourself. Do what your mom told you to do, you adore your grandma. Look at your own actions before someone else's, like Matthew 7:5 says, you hypocrite. Take the plank out of your own eye and then you can clearly see to remove the speck from your brother's eye. The circus will end when the manipulation, the lies, and the attempts at intimidation end. When people stop asking for forgiveness but continue the same behavior expecting different results.
Ms. Scares, you need to wind it down.
Two seconds, yeah.
Wind it down.
My Bible teaches that repentance follows forgiveness. But many denominations only teach salvation, and I consider that to be fire insurance religion. People need to repent, change their ways, but until then, I plan to keep coming up here and pointing out the truth. And also I pray, Father, forgive them for they know not what they do. Amen.
Jane Kendrick.
Welcome, Ms. Kendrick.
Hi, Mr. Dalton, thank you. Uh, Jane Kendrick, Tunstall District. I have a couple of things really quickly to say.
Pull your mic down, Ms. Kendrick.
Sorry.
Okay, there you go.
I would just like to point out something that's been on my mind for weeks now and still have not received any resolution about it. On Monday, November thirteenth, there was a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. It was advertised in the paper, uh, right there, you know, in the midst of the election season. Um, I kept checking, there was no agenda published. As of this morning, there was still no agenda published. I assumed erroneously that maybe the meeting had been postponed or the issue that I was interested in was not being brought forth. That was mistake. My husband got home late from work and we didn't get to the meeting, we watched it online and low and behold, the meeting took place. Now, the excuse I have been given is that there was some sort of glitch with computers, blah, blah, blah. Every other agenda is out there as of this morning for previous and current and, and future meetings, except for that one. I don't know where it is or why the public did not have access to it. I will state again publicly, because I have written emails and I have had conversations with the county attorney and the Board of Zoning Appeals Attorney, I've emailed with him, that in my opinion, every decision made that night should be null and void. Because citizens did not have the opportunity to read and to dissect and digest and to talk about and to contact the appropriate departments regarding all the changes and all the proffers that Southside Investors made and the Community Development Department talked about. The citizens were once again left out of the decision-making process. These boards that are set up in our county are supposed to be to conduct county business that affects, that impacts citizens. When citizens don't have the opportunity to know what is happening, they really can't be prepared. My other big beef with that is listening to that meeting. The proffers were talked about and this and that and the other, which you don't have a copy of it, you can't keep up with it. The people on the board had the copy by, at that point, but citizens didn't. And the Board of Zoning Appeals Attorney told me, well, um, yeah, we just have to make that available, the agenda available to the board at the same time and, and to citizens at the same time. So my logic is this, you're making all these decisions when you're only looking at it for just a, a quick few minutes. Is that what we're supposed to believe? But this is another example where county citizens are being disenfranchised, are being excluded, are being not listened to and not heard when simple things like that are not in place. I was told this summer with all that RPD mess, that the agendas were supposed to be posted by Friday, closes business. Thank you. It did not happen. This is not the first time, but this was one that was really huge for us. And I just want, I want the county, I want the Board of Supervisors to not just hear this tonight, but to go back tomorrow and the upcoming days and say, what happened here? Because citizens are not happy about this. And no, they're not all out here tonight, but you know, it is getting to be the holiday season. But I am telling you that I'm not letting this go because it's too important. And I don't think we were treated fairly. And I just wanted to say that, thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else signed up, Ms. Mcclus?
Mr. Chairman, that's all that we had to sign up. However, Maureen Wood was not here at the start of the meeting and she would like to speak if you allow it.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Come on up, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Board members. I'm, uh, my name is Maureen Wood, I'm in the Tunstall District. And I'm fairly new to the county, I used to live up in Northern Virginia. And I was pretty shocked to see my, uh, tax assessment come in and have my property assessment be raised by fifty-four percent. And I was going to blast y'all tonight, pretty much. Um, I sent an email on November ninth to three of you guys and I didn't hear from anybody. So I waited and I emailed on Monday saying, hey, I haven't heard from you. And then I get a short email back, um, some of the issues I had were some issues with the website. And all I was told was to call the IT department. And it's like, you know, why should I have to do that? Why don't you pass it on or, you know, ask what the problem was? And then the other thing, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, with the assessments, I, somebody did pass my email on. I got a phone call from Dave Arnold, uh, the County Assistant Administrator. And he calmed me down about my assessment and told me, I'm not used to, like I said, I used to live up in Northern Virginia. My assessment went up every year. And not every four years, and then you get a sticker shock. And to me, you guys are losing out on money by waiting four years to do it. And then we get the sticker shock and it's like, oh my God, you know, how am I going to afford an extra three, four, five, six hundred dollars a year on top of all the other things that we've, that have increased? I mean, everything has increased, everything. So, I mean, that's a little, that I wanted to let you know. The assessment, if you guys ha, and I'm sure most of the county residents are sticker shocked by that assessment, I would hope that you guys would consider lowering the tax rate. I mean, I know that you have to increase taxes, but don't increase it so it blows us out of the water where we can't afford to live here anymore. Um, that was just a couple of things, things that I wanted to bring to your attention. And like I said, I'm pretty new to the county. Um, shame on me that I haven't been involved in the political, uh, arena here. I've been here two years and this is the first time I've ever come and participated in a, in a meeting. But that, it's not going to be my last. So, thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Is that it, Ms. Mcclus?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving to item ten, public hearings. Rezoning, public hearings. Pursuit to Article Five, Division Six of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance. The Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues, zoning map changes in support of said ordinance and accomplishment. In addition, this ta, important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, self, safety, general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals, that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Moving on to ten-one. Public hearing, case R-23-026, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-026, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors have petitioned to rezone thirty-two point two-six acres located on US Highway twenty-nine in the Chatham-Blair's election district from A-one agricultural district to M-two industrial district, heavy industry, to allow for a public facility, a correctional facility. On October third, twenty-twenty-three, the Planning Commission, Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to N-two, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash four-zero-two are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, County staff, Sheriff Mike Taylor, and the project's principal consultant, Tony Bell with Mosley Architects, are available to answer any questions that she may have.
Thank you. At seven fifty-seven, I opened a public hearing. Is anyone signed up, Ms. Mcclus?
Yes, sir. Fred Curl.
Mr. Curl?
I think he left.
He's left, okay.
Yes.
All right, anyone else?
Is it a Harding? Is there a Harding, a Holding, F.C., F.E., J.C.? Okay, okay, so that's it.
That's it, all right. Seven fifty-eight, I close the public hearing in case R-23-20-026. The pleasure is going to be yours, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm making motion that, uh, we approve, uh, it as presented under case number R-23-026, uh, as was submitted.
Motion by Mr. Warren, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Dudley, any discussion on the motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we ought to be, uh, clear because I know he left, but some of the answers would be that, uh, the jail would, actually, it's not going to look like a jail. It's going to blend into what's there and it's going to be set back, uh, as far as that is reasonably possible. Uh, and I think anybody that wants to expand on that, I know Tony's here, he could certainly expand on that. But, uh, we just, uh, we got to build a jail. And Sheriff Taylor does an excellent job at running that operation and I don't think we've had any, uh, problems really as it relates to safety or anything here in the town of Chatham with the jail operating here. So we certainly wouldn't expect any out there, es- especially with the additional, uh, safety measures that are in place and security measures. Also, it's, it's very complicated and, and the sheriff could actually, if you want to know more details, you can contact him, but it, uh, it is very unsafe for deputies in an environment when you've got multiple levels and you're transferring, uh, prisoners or inmates from one floor to the another. So, and the sheriff has explained that in detail to us and, uh, of course, Tony, Tony has too. So the need for that facility to be out there and be a one-level type, uh, structure for any, any inmates is very paramount to the safety out there. So that's why the, the property was purchased there and that's why it's, it's going to be going there and it's, you know, it's across from the salvage site and the, uh, VOTEC program and then the middle school. So it's pretty much industry through there, through, out, but it's truck sales or truck rentals or equipment rentals. It's in, it's in keeping with a comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, any more comments?
I, I know we've closed out, but is it anything that, you know, have we asked Tony, is it anything that he came to present or anything?
No.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
All right, we good, we ready to vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Warren, is yours still up there? Thank you.
He's a little slow this evening.
All right, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Tony, for being here, brother. Appreciate it.
Ten-two, uh, public hearing case R-23-027, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-23-027, Connie Horsley has petitioned to rezone forty-three acres located on Primitive Baptist Road West in the Tunstall election district from R-one residential suburban subdivision district and A-one agricultural district to A-one agricultural district to allow for the placement of a double-wide mobile home. On October third, twenty-twenty-three, the Planning Commission recommended by a six-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A-one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, unless I missed her, I do not believe that Alexis Brodenax is here. Do not see her.
Anyone here to represent the case?
But I will be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Anyone have any questions? That was a six-o vote with Planning Commission?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
With no opposition.
Got you.
At eight oh-three, I open the public hearing for case R-23-027. Ms. Mcclus, has anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right. At eight oh-three, I close the public hearing in case R-23-027. Uh, the pleasure is yours, Mr. Ingram, are you on?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I do make the motion that we approve this rezoning. I do not have the verbiage in front of me due to a downloading issue. If you could read that, uh, for me, I'd appreciate that, but I do make the motion.
Will you, will you do it, Mr.?
I'll take care of that motion for you, Mr. Ingram.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Dudley.
In case R-23-027, I make a motion approving the rezoning of forty-three acres from R-one residential suburban subdivision district to A-one agriculture district to A-one agriculture district to allow a double-wide to be placed on this property. That's the motion for Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley, can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Tucker, any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram, can I get your vote?
Yes, ma'am, I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Property being rezoned. Other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residence or for non-resident, non-county citizens, in the all-utonal voice for the records. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her, uh, address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board's affirmative gives to the, to extend the speakers a lot at time. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who was, who has not signed up. Public, uh, moving to, uh, the one here, public hearing on the County Code amendments, Ms. Ra, uh, Ragsdale.
Mr. Chairman, um, staff has proposed before you some amendments to Chapter, um, eighteen of the Pennsylvania County Code, which is the subdivision ordinance. Um, on August fifteenth of this year, you all approved amendments to the RPD zoning district um, that allowed a reduction in lot size with, um, the approval of a rezoning application and the, um, use of private streets on a limited basis to serve certain types of uses within RPD, um, to allow specifically townhomes to be constructed and sold off individually. However, under the Pennsylvania County subdivision ordinance, which is a separate chapter of the Pennsylvania County Code than the zoning ordinance, um, this still requires fifty feet of road frontage on a state-maintained road in order for a lot to be subdivided. Um, so staff has proposed some changes to the subdivision, subdivision ordinance specifically related to RPD zoning, um, or lots that are zoned RPD and allowing the reduction of those road frontage requirements um, if a, if a rezoning application is approved by the Board of Supervisors and it is shown on the plan for that, um, development as well as the use or frontage on private roads, if you all approve those private roads as part of the, um, rezoning process as well. So there's a red line version in front of you. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Um, additionally, just so you know, it is important that this be adopted. Otherwise, staff has to go with the most restrictive. So the subdivision ordinance, ordinance would supersede our zoning ordinance. So you would not be able to subdivide townhomes, um, in any of these developments if this is not approved.
Any, any questions for Ms. Ragsdale? All right, excuse me. Eight oh-seven, I open the public hearing, has anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Jane Kendrick.
All right, Ms. Kendrick. Welcome again.
Thank you again. Um, I, just a quick comment on the subdivision ordinance. I don't understand, and I will bring it forth again to this board, the same way I did with the RPD code changes. I don't understand why this is being done without public input since the Berkeley Group is in the process of rewriting and will soon, December fourteenth, have public hearings. Why is this separate? Uh, seven times within the subdivision ordinance, the, the red line that, uh, Ms. Ragsdale mentioned, seven times with the, is the statements made may be approved by the Board of Supervisors, smaller lots, you know, less setback, less road frontage, et cetera. And so my question is, why do we have an ordinance if we have so much leeway whenever any group or any developer such as Southside comes in and says, oh, well, we need to change it. We need, uh, we need, uh, exceptions to the rules. I was a schoolteacher for twenty years. You don't make exceptions to the rules or else you have a problem on your hands. And we're going to have a problem on our hands. It's already been evidenced by the fact that this Board of Supervisors refused to, uh, require Southside Investors to have the very basic- require Southside investors to have the very basic road studies completed before they approved the RPD zoning changes, before they gave them the special use permits, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so this is going to, this is going to be a problem to going down the road if you just look a little bit further than right here, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. So my question is, um, why are we doing this? You know, why is this have to be done? And, you know, I, I understand has to be done for, you know, for the RPD. And we all know the only RPD currently is Southside Investors and the Axton property. They need this so they can subdivide, so that they can sell the townhouses individually. So I guess the question is, is there anything else? Is there anything else that we can do in this county that we can give Southside investors? Do they have a list? Is this like Christmas, Santa Claus, you know, you're making a list, I want this, I want that? You've given them every single thing they've asked for. Regardless of this room being packed a couple of months ago with people saying, this is not a good project. We don't want this, et cetera. So what else are we gonna give them? I saw Mr. Gallagher is here, I don't know if he still is or not. I mean, what else are we giving away? And why are we making these changes without citizens being fully aware when the meetings are coming up in just a few weeks and then further down the road in a few months?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else signed it?
I'm, Mr. Chairman.
That's it, thank you. At eight-ten, I close the public hearing. All entertain a motion?
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll make the motion that we table this item and, and bring it back the same evening that we're doing the public hearing for the other items. And, uh, I think we're doing those in December, is that right?
Emily?
I think it'll be fourteenth, I'm not sure.
That's gonna be before our meeting, I believe.
Yeah.
Was it the fourteenth of the change?
So the fourth, uh, these are two separate, two separate things.
Okay.
So the fourteenth is the public workshop for the zoning ordinance, uh, um, rewrite. So that is just kicking off the public input process to the public. That will not come back before you until January and it will come back at another work session. You will not hold public hearings or take any action on that item until the spring.
Well.
So are you asking to table this until then or?
Personally, I, I would like to see it just tabled and dealt with after we have all the public input that's coming and it be handled by the new board because they're the ones that are gonna have to deal with any of the issues. Uh, you know, I mean, they, with all due respect, we should be respectful of the folks that's gonna have to deal with it as setting board members, not, you know, not us tonight. That's why I sat so quietly and didn't, didn't make a motion. And it, you know, it, it makes sense to me to allow those folks 'cause we do still have work that's being done on the overall code. Is this going to delay any economic development growth by allaying this that you're aware of?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure it would delay their planning, um, but, you know, I don't know how much that sets off their timeline. I would just like the board to keep in mind that this is not part of the zoning ordinance, which is the only thing that the Berkeley Group is working on. You all have already changed the zoning ordinance. This wording mirrors the changes that were adopted in zoning ordinance, just allowing staff to allow those change, the change regulations to occur. 'Cause right now, even if someone brought a subdivision plot to me that you all had approved as part of an RPD rezoning application that showed frontage on a private street or showed less than fifty feet of road frontage, I could not sign off on that because the subdivision ordinance, which is a completely separate document and completely separate set of regulations, would restrict that. It would require fifty feet of road frontage and it would have to be on a state-maintained road. So without the approval of this, those changes that you made in RPD mean nothing.
So they mean nothing, so it does slow down?
Yes.
Any of the process.
It, it would, it would halt the process. Um, because under zoning, they could move forward. But once they actually start submitting actual subdivision plots to my office to be reviewed so that the property can be split up to move towards development, um, at that point, we would not be able to sign off on anything.
But those subdivision plots are, would still have to come back to the setting board?
Those are administratively reviewed. So my office reviews them, they never actually come back to the board.
I saw in here that the board had the right to approve certain things.
So if you, the way that it's written in the ordinance, if you all have reviewed or approved a rezoning application and as part of that rezoning application, they have shown lots fronting on a private street, which Southside has done, or they have shown lots that do not meet the road frontage requirement of fifty feet, which Southside is doing with townhomes, um, then we could, based on your approval of the rezoning, with that concept plan and site plan approval as part of that process, staff could administratively approve a subdivision plot showing those same things. Now, if there's an existing RPD, um, that comes to my office and wants to make changes to their approved plan that was approved as part of their rezoning process, that put in private streets or reduced road frontage, um, on their lots to meet these new regulations, that would have to come back to the board because that would be a substantial change to their plan that they submitted.
And, and the one that was approved for Southside, right? What language did it get approved under? The, not the new language, 'cause it's not approved. It was approved under the old language.
So it has not been approved yet? Well, it, the, the site plan was approved for you all. When it comes to my office for the actual subdivision, that's an administrative approval. So that, so I approve that. We review it against codes and as long as it meets zoning requirements and subdivision requirements, I administratively approve that. That never actually comes back to the board unless it's a substantial change.
But if they came in now?
I would deny it.
And, and wanted to do smaller numbers, you would have to deny it?
Yes.
Well, I, I, for one sitting member who voted for the project, I'm uncomfortable, uh, making the motion to approve it when it's not in my district. So I'm gonna make a motion that we table it until December when Mr. Ingram can be here. Assuming he's not gonna be in the specific, the Pacific. He's in the Atlantic now, he'll be in the Pacific next month. Uh, so that, you know, he can weigh in on the issue. And, you know, at Christmas time here, I mean, we're night, we're gonna have it on the nineteenth. So, you know, we're twenty-one days away. That shouldn't really show the process, slow the process down significantly. But I, I just think it's fair to, to let Mr. Ingram be present and make that decision. So I'm gonna make motion to table it.
I second it.
All right. Motion by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Ings, Ms. Ings to table it until December.
Mr. Tucker?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I agree with Mr. Warren. That is why I was a bit apprehensive because I was waiting for Mr. Ingram to kind of weigh in. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Warren to, uh, just to be, I guess, procedurally correct. How about let's make that motion to postpone it until our December meeting as opposed to table it?
Uh, I will amend my motion to say that we postpone instead of table it. That's semantics, but I have no problem with that.
Yep.
Got a motion from Ms. Ings. Will you second Mr. Warren's motion?
She doubled up on him.
All right, we got a second on that. Any more discussion?
No, sir.
All right, if not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram?
Okay, then y'all breaking up on me, but I'm gonna vote yes, if you can hear it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Motion carries unanimously and postpone it to next month. All right, thank y'all. Moving to item two, public hearing. Uh, Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter twenty-five revisions approval for the small purchase, the threshold increase. Staff, Ms. Connie Gibson. Is anyone else here to represent?
Ms. Vanderheide's gonna pinch hit for her.
All right, Ms. Vanderheide?
So a recommendation was made by procurement manager Connie Gibson to increase the small purchase threshold limit. She's having an increasing difficult time getting quotes anymore because of the price of goods and services has increased significantly over the last three years. And so sometimes we just have to rely on one quote because right now that limit is anything less than a thousand dollars. So, um, we are res- we did some research. She didn't just arbitrarily pick a number, but she reached out to seventeen different localities to see what their limit was. And the majority of those have increased their small purchase threshold limit to five thousand dollars. So, um, that limit would move to five thousand. So anything less than five thousand, you would just basically get one price if it seemed reasonable. Then anything from five to fifteen, you would get verbal quotes. And then anything from fifteen to a hundred thousand, you would get written quote, three written quotes. Um, we have a very diligently diligent procurement department and they make sure that we get the best prices, um, for our goods and services. So, um, I fully support this and, and her.
And, and that.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And where, I mean, you always end up giving us an update on all purchases anyway cumulatively?
Yes.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion that we amend what has been recommended and change the number up to ten thousand. I mean, we got an outstanding procurement department over there and Ms. Vanderheide is overseeing all of our operations and they certainly have shown their due diligence in making sure of that and with the rising cost of today. And we're gonna get a report on it anyway. So if you ever think that it doesn't look just right, you can always drop back. But it, it makes it very difficult to do that job in this environment because people are hesitant to give long-term quotes for any period of time because things change so rapidly. So I make a motion that we approve it, but increase it to ten. I'm sorry.
Let's hold that public hearing. Can you open that public hearing?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. At eight-twenty-two, I open the public hearing. Is anyone signed up to speak? Okay. At eight-twenty-two, I'll close the public hearing.
Now I'll make your motion.
All right, guys. All right, we got a motion on the floor to change it to ten thousand.
So, uh, just to be clear, you know, we're changing different categories. So the five would move to ten and then we would go from ten to twenty, twenty to a hundred. Does that make sense?
Well, I would say go ten to twenty-five and then do twenty-five to a hundred.
That's fine.
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion to be backed.
Okay.
All right, we got the motion on the floor and do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any more discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes, ma'am, I vote yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. Item eleven, Mr. Hunt, do we have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
All right, how about some new business?
No, sir.
All right, moving to item thirteen A. Matters from the work session. What do we have on A? That was the, um, that's the facility approval for, for the facilities, okay.
Somebody's got it, I don't.
Yeah, does anyone have that motion?
No. Mr. Warren, if you wanna make that, whoever wants to make it from the work session.
Uh, I make a motion that we follow up and, uh, with from our work session to approve the facilities improvement program as presented during the work session.
All right, we got a motion there, we have a second.
Go ahead, I'll second.
All right, second by Mr. Dudley. Any more discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Ingram?
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Pleasure. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item thirteen B. Oh, you get a motion for the approval, I think it was for landfill position?
I make a motion that, uh, we instruct the county administrator to proceed with hiring of the assistant director for the landfill that is already budgeted for. And, uh, he will work with, um, the director of that, which is Chris Adcock, under the supervision of Chris. And, uh, I think and hope, uh, Mr. Terrell will include, uh, Mr. Adcock in that hiring process.
Absolutely.
Mr. Warren, Mr. Chairman, just for the clarity and the minutes, Ms. Vanderheide or Mr. Terrell, what is the exact position name of that gonna be?
Assistant Solid Waste Director.
Okay, we got the motion from Mr. Warren. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dudley. Any more discussion on the motion?
And I'm just gonna clarify one more time, I apologize.
Yes.
We do not have a solid waste director position. We do have a public works director.
That's what it is.
And it's under his supervision. He's.
Yes, so we will make that the assistant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the purpose of the minutes. Uh, Mr. Ingram?
We ready to vote?
Uh, vote yes.
Thank you. Who made that second, I'm sorry.
I did.
Mr. Dudley? All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving to fourteen, uh, board members reports, uh, Mr. Tucker, you'd like to start first, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, let me commend you on a good meeting this evening. Um, I want to first start out by thanking, uh, Ms. Diane McFarland and Ms. Kelly Kuzee for being over at the ribbon cutting this morning, braving the elements. Uh, so we appreciate you and your work, but, uh, we also thank all of the staff for all the preparation they do and getting us ready for these meetings and keeping us surprised of everything that's going on. Uh, very quickly, I wanna thank all of the Bannister residents, uh, for your support and for your vote in terms of re-electing me to, uh, this position. And as I've told others, and I share with, um, even the broader community, Pennsylvania County at large, you know, now that the election is over, it's time for us to close ranks and come together. We're one community. We'll, we'll see each other in the shopping centers, we'll see each other in the grocery stores, that sort of thing. So, uh, I'm just hoping that we can all, uh, start to come together at the end of this whole process and be about moving the county forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Skas?
Yeah, just wanna take a moment to publicly thank all the people that supported me in my reelection bid. Obviously, we came up a little short, but it's my honor to serve this county and work with the great staff we have in the county. We've made some great progress for about five years, did some awesome things for the county and I'm really proud of that. Uh, one of my highlights of working here has been accountability and transparency and that won't change. People think I may be disappearing into the sunlight, that's not gonna happen. Uh, I'll be, as the chairman of the Danville Tea Party for many years before I got on the board and being very active in two patriot groups, constitutional conservative groups here in the county, I'll certainly be watching the shows that are put on, uh, planning commission, the board meetings, uh, fire and rescue commission, because I still have a lot of questions that I have with fire and rescue and accountability and I'm gonna make sure that I stay on top of that. gonna make sure that I stay on top of that. Uh, gonna stay on top of frivolous investigations thrown out by rogue supervisors. And there's always something called Freedom of Information Request that I'll be putting in anytime I see something funny. If it smells, it's probably stinking pretty bad, so I will stay involved and keep an eye on things, whether or not I'm a private citizen or not. In fact, I'll probably have more freedom to do more as a private citizen. Uh, there's a lot of information I could not pass on as a supervisor, but as a private citizen, I'll be free to do what I need to do. So, you know, I'll keep, buckle up, buttercup. This is gonna be a fun ride next year.
Thank you, Mr. Skas. Mr. Warren, you have any comments, sir?
Uh, I'm gonna be real short, because, because, because Mr. Dalton told me I've talked enough tonight. Uh, I, I wanna thank staff. Um, man, we got some of the best people in this county working in this county. And I've had the pleasure of working with most of them for the last eight years, because we don't have a lot of turnover, and that's, that's a good thing. Uh, especially with the folks on the super, that are at, working directly with the supervisors. So I can't say enough, uh, about you folks. Uh, it has been a pleasure to work with you, and they do an outstanding job. And I think to their core, they have the citizens' best interest, uh, at heart, and that's what we want. Um, I also wanna congratulate the winners of the past election, uh, both at the state level and all the way down to the board of supervisors, and, uh, kinda reiterate, uh, what Mr. Tucker said. I hope you all can come together and agree to disagree without being disagreeable and try to be very professional about it. Uh, you don't all need to be alike, and you don't all need to agree all the time, because if you did, we didn't, we don't need seven of you. We only need one of you. So kinda keep that in mind, that it's, it's okay to listen to your citizens and, uh, hopefully you're, you're praying about your decisions and all that too, so that you're making good, sound ones. But, uh, please try to always carry yourself as professional as possible. Uh, I tried to do that for eight years. I know sometimes, uh, the old flesh gets involved in you. Sometimes don't carry yourself exactly like you meant to, but you get in the, you get in the car going home, and sometimes you're driving along, and you, you're doing a lot of talking to yourself and to the good Lord above, saying, "Man, I could've done a better job than I did." So I hope I didn't have too many of those times that offended anybody. Also, I want to say a real thank you to the individuals that ran that didn't get elected.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we owe it to all of them to take time to say thank you, because it's not a easy thing to do, to get out and campaign and run for it and put yourself out there, uh, because you're under a microscope during that time. And a lot of times, things are said that aren't necessarily accurate, and, uh, I think sometimes folks forget when they say it. You can't, uh, especially if you put it out there on Facebook, which I hate, you can't really take it back. You can knock it off of your Facebook, but it's out there in the world now. And, uh, it doesn't just affect that one individual that's serving. It affects their entire family. And, uh, I hope we'll always be conscious of that going forward. And I'm looking forward to December nineteenth, my last meeting, and I'll have a few, a few more, uh, parting thoughts when that happens. I am very pleased, uh, with the election of my replacement. I think Mr. Ken Bowman will do an outstanding job. Uh, I'm pretty sure it'll take about thirty seconds for everybody to just be saying, "Bob who?" Uh, once Ken takes the seat. So, uh, Ken, glad, glad you're gonna be here, buddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mr. Dudley?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Dalton. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Um, it's been a long, long evening. It's been a rushed one. Um, a lot of indigestion, because we had to eat fast and get in here and, but I wanna thank your staff, uh, which is the mechanics of our meetings. Uh, we get up here and vote, and they get in there and do the work. And I am so thankful for them, how they put things together. I really appreciate it so much. Um, the folks that we recognized, um, first responders, thank you guys for coming. Thank you for being here. They mean a lot to me. Um, I was in a severe accident years ago, and, um, a young lady hit me head on. It killed her. And, you know, those first responders, they came, and it wasn't, wasn't nothing life-threatening with me. But the big deal was, even after the wreck and, and, um, I had some surgeries and all, the folks from fire department, um, rescue, they come by my house just to check on me. Boy, that, that, that's a big deal for me. Um, because, you know, when things happen, and a young girl, she was killed, emotionally, you just, but, you know, I'm so thankful for them, the job that they do, the response that they do, um, special pace all over our county, not just, uh, not just for me. Um, I wanna thank the folks that did support me during the election. Um, you know, I had a lot of support. I, I worked hard for some, um, for some, to see some things. And, you know, even though there's a winner and there's a loser, we, we, we still need to pull together and realize that we're in this position, not for Tim Dudley. It's gotta be for Pennsylvania County. And I just wanna thank all those that come out and was willing to run. I, I met some good folks. Congratulations. Um, thank you, Eddie, for being here this evening. Uh, Mr. Whittleback there and Ken Bowman, um, um, those three gentlemen won. Um, they was included in our, in our closed session. I'd like to see us do that again next month, to just kind of starting to give them a heads up. But I also, I got to meet some folks during this election that were really good people. Um, Josh Austin was one. Um, I met Josh through our GOP. He was coming to our meetings. Does that mean I gotta quit? Is that, no?
Yeah, time.
Okay. I met Josh during our meetings, and Josh is a good man, and I really appreciate you, uh, coming tonight. You know, a lot of times, a lot of times, it just, you know, if it's over, it's over. Thank you. And, you know, there's a couple of other folks. I didn't know Angie Harris before this election, but I really had the desire to see her win. So I did work hard for her at our polls. And also, um, I made a good friend in this area, Mark Shields, who ran for the school board. Just a wonderful, wonderful person. And, um, I cherish the relationships that I gained through this, um, through this election. Learned a lot, um, happy about things, disappointed about things, and then we move on. But thank you all for coming tonight. And I would ask you also, um, to continue to pray for Israel. Um, you know, things happened, and, you know, we get so used to hear, see it on the news, it becomes old news, but let's just continue to lift them up there. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Ms. Ings?
I want to thank the staff too that, um, keep us going. And anytime we have questions, they're always available. Um, our county attorney, Vaden Hunt, he's always there to keep the supervisors on track, keep us out of trouble. And, um, all the citizens and guests that we have that come out, uh, the supervisors appreciate all the guests and all your input. And I want to continue for everybody to remember the citizens. Um, when you serve in this position, you serve the citizens.
That's right.
And you stand by the citizens. And I appreciate everybody that stood by me. And the, the best thing about it, even though I was not the chosen winner, is the contacts and the people that you meet in the community. And the time that you serve is being a lion to, to help them, to listen to the citizens. And that's what I'm all about, is listening and doing what you can. And I appreciate the opportunity to be serving as the interim person. That's all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ings. Mr. Ingram, can you hear us?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I can.
Any comments, sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a couple, sir. Uh, November the seventh was a very special day, because in addition to being Election Day, it was my wife and I's thirty-eighth wedding anniversary. And as I said during that time period, if I win, I'm going on a cruise. If I lose, I'm going on a cruise, and I am on a cruise. And, uh, just very thankful for that, uh, the people that voted for me, that supported me. Uh, you know, again, I can't say thank you enough. I did wanna welcome Tysons. Uh, it's very exciting to have such a major corporation come to our county. Uh, Mr. Chairman did a great job this morning. I did wanna let you know that even, even though I'm supposed to be on vacation, I watched that presentation. I've been with you since three-thirty this afternoon. I did wanna extend my congratulations to our new board members, our new colleagues, and I echo what's already been said, is that as a board, we can come together, we can be about the people's business, and hopefully the outside influence of people that wanna keep the pot stirred will just sort of drift off into the horizon. Uh, we just celebrated Veterans Day. It's a very special time for many of us, and so I wanted to thank all the veterans, as well as Thanksgiving. That's, um, always a special time. If you have the true meaning of Thanksgiving in your heart, uh, you, you'll never go without. And speaking of being thankful, I am so thankful for our fire and rescue folks. They still continue to take hits from some likely and some unlikely sources, but you know what? We have over six hundred volunteers, and if they decided one day we're gonna sit down and stop serving, the ones that keep trying to pick a fight with them, I, I'd like to ask you, how you gonna fund that one? But needless to say, I'm very grateful for them. And, uh, I did wanna make mention of an old friend, L.B. Barber, that welcomed me into the Westover Hills Lawn and Fire Department back in the early seventies. He recently passed away at the age of ninety, as well as another dear friend, Scott Ings, who was retired from Dambel PD, lifetime member of the Dambel Life Saver Crew, and a member of Blair's Fire and Rescue, who, uh, after twenty-three surgeries, finally, um, went on to heaven. So anyway, Mr. Chairman, having said that, thank you for the time, and y'all take care.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Well, it looks like everybody stole all my thunder, but I'm gonna add a little bit more to it.
There you go. Help yourself.
Yeah. First off, thank everyone for coming out tonight, all the staff, all the hard work you do. Again, I just wanna echo a huge thank you to all our fire and rescue, public safety. What a fantastic job y'all do. I mean, the North Point, it was, it was one of them bad situations, and it turned out good. We didn't lose any lives. But y'all do some, y'all do this type of stuff every day. So I just wanna thank you. Uh, I had the opportunity to go to Wayside. I know it's in Mr. Dudley's district, and he had mentioned it earlier. There was a youth fish day, and I had a, a little time to, to go down there and watch these kids catch fish. And I'm gonna tell you, if you was having a bad day, that was the place you need to be.
That's right. Yeah.
Because, uh, they put a smile on the face.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it's something we need to do every year. I'm telling you, it was really nice.
Yeah.
Um, also, I had the pleasure of attending the Tyson, uh, ribbon cutting today. Great, great turnout there. It's a great business. Uh, also wanna thank Ms. Holly Kuzee, Ms. Diane McFarlane for being there. I mean, it was a cold, windy morning, but they come out and helped get everything together and make sure it all come together. Huge thank you to them. Uh, and again, I wanna thank all the candidates that got out and run, 'cause I tell you, other than being there, and as Mr. Warren, some other members here said, it's not easy.
Mm-mm.
No. You ride up down the road, knock on doors and talk, and you miss out on a lot of things at home that you've spent in time campaigning. So, uh, thank you all for running. And with that, that's all I've got. And Mr. Terrell, do you have any comments, sir?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the assistant county administrator for his hard work on moving the broadband project forward and handling the reassessment issues as they arise, and also the jail project. I'd also like to thank Ms. Bud for her hard work on the reassessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Hunt, you have any comments, sir?
No, sir. It's time to go home.
Sound like a winner.